Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Richmond Common Council Meeting for April 21st. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a prayer by Councilman Engel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to its broad and broad range of rights, its changes, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, give us the strength tonight to examine every ordinance before us and to be fair and make decisions that will affect all of our community and to help everyone in our community to become everything they can be. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Doug Goss.
Here.
Lucinda Wright.
Present.
Bill Engel.
Here.
Larry Parker.
Here.
Ann Taylor.
Here.
Gary Turner.
Here.
Jane Bumbalo.
Here.
Justin Burkhart.
Here.
And Jerry Purcell.
Here.
All are in favor or all in present. Whatever.
They're all in favor.
Yeah.
Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting that was held on April 7th. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Bumbalo.
If there's no additions or corrections, I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 7th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the minutes as submitted. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Presentations, petitions, memorials. First one we have is Tammy Johnson from Abilities. Would you please come forward?
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
You guys in the back?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. To the members of the Richmond City Council, I stand before you today not to dignify baseless rumors or media mischaracterizations, but to fulfill a responsibility that has gone unanswered through formal channels. Over the past months, I have sent 27 detailed emails to the Richmond City Council members, Wayne County Council representatives. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I'll stop shaking in a minute.
Take your time.
State legislators, senatorial offices, and the governor's administration requesting letters of support for Abilities Richmond and invitations to witness our daily operations. To date, I have received just two responses. One from a county council member asking, "Who are you and what do you do?" And Senator Jim Banks' office committing to send staff to observe our work. A gesture we appreciate. Okay. "The silence compels me to speak plainly. Abilities Richmond is not just a vision, it's a living, breathing, lit community, serving 147 individuals with developmental and physical disabilities throughout Indiana with programs that truly transform lives. We are not asking for funds today. We are asking you to look past the rumors of the last week and see what really happens at Abilities Richmond. Unlike many organizations, we have chosen not to take the nonprofit tax abatement. Instead, we pay our property taxes in full because we believe in contributing to Richmond's growth just as much as we believe in our mission. For 16 years, we have helped people achieve things they never thought possible. Our results are real and proven, not just promises. What follows is not a plea, but evidence of why Richmond cannot afford to ignore their most vulnerable citizens. When my son Matthew, a young man with Down Syndrome..." Right here. Go ahead and sit down. "...whose smile could melt winter into spring, graduated high school. The world seemed to say, 'Congratulations, now what?' Programs promised him purpose, but delivered little more than empty hours. Today, I stand before you, not just as a founder, but as a witness to transformation, storylike Ian's, who suffered a traumatic brain injury at age five. Doctors said he would not survive childhood, but he defied the odds. Recently placed on hospice, he rallied back with one request: I want to go to Abilities. Now he greets us daily from the recliner in the classroom, content to just be surrounded by his people. This is the power of Abilities Richmond, turning impossible into I'm possible." In 2009, after a year of late nights and prayer, the IRS approved our 501(c)(3) status on August 6th, Matthew's birthday, a sign I believed that God was with us. With a $5,000 gift from my ex-father-in-law, we opened a tiny thrift store at 821 East Main Street. I dreamed it would become a haven like Goodwill, but reality was harsh. Money was tight. How will we pay the rent? Cindy Sum, my general manager and best friend, and I wondered. But in that little shop, Matthew and Sarah, the first two souls to trust us, sordid donations, their laughter echoing like a promise. Sarah, who's been with us since day one, continues to grow and inspire everyone around her. For five years, Cindy and I took no salaries. We lived on hope and thrift store coffee, just me. She doesn't like it. But then we'd watch Matthew walk through the door, shoulders back like he owned the place, and we'd keep going. In 2013, after two crushing rejections from the state, local Representative Dick Hamm became our angel. He helped us cut through the red tape, and when BDDS approval finally came, I sobbed. It meant we could stop begging and start serving. In 2021, we moved into 831 Northeast Street, a number that still makes my heart skip. 831 was the area code in Hollister, California, where Matthew took his first steps. This building was a promise. No one gets left behind. But as more families joined us, the walls began to close in. Last week, we expanded to a larger second location nearby, doubling our space. Now sunlight floods two buildings, where LJ, overlooked, now brews lattes for our community at Undercover Coffee, his confidence and pride shining through every cup. Matthew, my heart, who loves all things spy-related and proudly declares himself the owner of Undercover Coffee. After all, it is his beaming face is the logo. Sarah teaches new artists to mix color like they're inventing rainbows. Ian holds court from his recliner, reminding us that presence matters as much as productivity. Fifteen classrooms buzz with life skills training, where I can't becomes I did. A day in the life. This is what dignity looks like. 8:00 AM, parents and guardians drop off their individuals, some clutching lunchboxes and waving goodbye with smiles that say, "I belong here." 9:00 AM, social hour buzzes with laughter and inside jokes. For many, this is their only circle of friends, a refuge from loneliness. 10:00 AM, in the art studio, hands stained with paint create masterpieces sold in our gift shop. Artists keep 50% of their earnings, their taste of "I did this." 12:30 PM, Jessica, a warrior who endured a double mastectomy and chemotherapy for stage-four breast cancer, arrives with her now curly hair and beautiful smile. "Abilities is my family," she says. "They're why I keep fighting." 2:00 PM, life skills class teaches cooking, budgeting, and independence. One day, these lessons will help them live in their own homes. But our commitment to support doesn't stop with the individuals we serve. We recognize that families and caregivers need community too. That's why Abilities Richmond hosts Strength Through Support, a monthly parent support group held on the first Wednesdays of each month. These gatherings offer a welcoming space for parents and guardians to connect, share experiences, and find encouragement as they navigate similar journeys. Our goal is to ensure that every family feels supported and empowered because when families are strong, our whole community thrives. 20 South 9th Street, more than a building, a testament to hope. Last year, we leased a 37,000-square-foot facility downtown. Let me paint a vision for you. Four four-bedroom residential homes on the top floor, where 16 individuals will live, laugh, and host game nights. No more group homes, where they're treated like tasks. This is family. A gift shop and coffee shop, where the community can taste coffee brewed with prize and buy art that whispers "I matter." Twenty classrooms and a sunlit art studio with a window so passerby's can watch masterpieces take place, take shape. I want Richmond to see their talent. Today, we serve 147 individuals all across Indiana with a team of 140 dedicated staff, but we need you to dream bigger. Our request, letters of recommendation. Your support and endorsement will help us secure much-needed funding to continue expanding opportunities for people like LJ, Sarah, Ian, Jessica, Matthew. With your help, we can show grant funders that Richmond stands behind inclusion, dignity, and possibility. A citywide conversation. Share our story. Let Richmond know that within these walls, the least of us are actually the best of us. When I began this journey, I never imagined standing before you. I was just a mom fighting for her son, but here's what I've learned. When you build a place where people are seen, the impact ripples outward. Parents like Lisa, whose daughter now calls Abilities Richmond "my second home", stops me at the grocery store to whisper, "Thank you for giving her a life." Council members, this isn't about charity. It's about legacy. It's about the young man who serves you coffee downtown and says, "I'm proud of my job." It's about the artist whose work hangs in your office, reminding you that disability doesn't mean less. It means different, and different is beautiful. In Matthew's honor and for every soul who's ever been told, "I can't," I ask you to help them shout, "Watch me." With gratitude and hope, Tammy Johnson. P.S. If you visit us sometime, you'll see Ian in his recliner, quietly beaming as his friends work around him. Jessica painting with hands that have held both IV poles and paintbrushes. Matthew grinning from the Undercover Coffee logo, a spy-themed badge of honor. Notice the spark in their eyes. That's the spark of lives that have been told, "You belong here. Let's create more sparks together." So what I wanted to do is let you guys know what we do at Abilities so that we could get these letters of recommendation. And that's what we need to write for federal, state, those types of grants. It's not something that we've done before, but we've achieved so much in the time that we've been here that we're going for more.
And where do these letters of recommendation, where are they to be sent to?
I don't know if it needs to just be general because I haven't applied for anything yet federal. It's more than likely going to be federal grants. And I don't know at this moment. We've just done all the paperwork to be able to apply for those, so I haven't got the final approval yet. But I think just something general that talks... And it can be just a whole, you know, your whole council. You don't have to write one each individually.
Right.
You could do a council one that just, you know, says that... And I really want you guys to come and see what we do. Come and see the individuals that are in our program and what we've done with them. With our individuals, we have hired three of our individuals, and they now work with us. One works full-time, and he will probably... So he went from, you know, just being in the program to now he's our lead barista, and that's LJ. Another one we hired as an assistant, and then another one works in the art department, and she makes her cards. And she's blind, but she makes all the cards. So if you come in and buy a card, they're made by her. So that's really all that I'm here for today is I just wanted you guys to know because it seems like nobody knows about Abilities.
What we'll do, we'll see if we can have a resolution from the council.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Bumbalo.
I would like to speak. Yes, I'm very well aware of Abilities. Jordan Forman is a cousin.
Okay.
And I know some of the individuals out there in the crowd. I have frequented Abilities, purchased supplies from your store. I know at the beginning it said you sent 27 detailed emails. I just received your email four days ago.
Right, and I did put in that email that it had been stuck in my graph.
And you had forgotten to send it, and then you had said that you're going to come and talk. So that's why I didn't reply.
Right, no, I understand.
Because I had the same questions of, "I'm not sure who or what or anything." But I know personally, I can't speak for everyone, but personally, I have... The coffee's amazing.
Yes, it is.
And I have very much enjoyed going and visiting. It kind of slowed down when they started the construction.
Oh, it killed our coffee shop, absolutely, yeah.
Things down there, but I thank you for coming and sharing.
Mr. Turner?
I'd like to make a motion to have a resolution prepared that would be in the nature of supporting all that you've just talked about. And that's my motion.
I second. We have a motion and a second to prepare a resolution in support of Abilities. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to say, I've had the pleasure to meet Tammy and Morgan and talk with them and to go into Abilities. And I remember the building, I'm aging myself now, when it was, I believe it was Kreske's Five and Dine 100 years ago. And that building, it is remarkable from what it was when they got it and the way it is now. And I do appreciate I'm aware of Abilities. They gave me a lot more information when I spoke with them.
The beautiful building is compliments of my husband, Bob Johnson, Own Place Developments. If you come in, you'll see what a beautiful job he did and what the new building's going to look like.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now have a speaker, Jen McNabb for Animal.
Hello.
Hello, Jen.
My name is Jen McNabb. I'm a little bit nervous too, so excuse me.
Take your time.
I am a... Just a little bit about me. I am a social worker in Wayne County at a nursing home. Prior to being a social worker, I worked in the mental health field with Centerstone, supporting families and children, working closely with DCS. So to say I've seen horrible, horrible things involving children and animals is an understatement. On April 6th of this year, I was compelled to reach out to Larry Parker and ask for permission to speak today because I saw a picture of a dead dog in a green rosy roller outside someone's home on the north side. And once you see something like that, you can't unsee it. It was a punch to the gut to me. I'm an animal lover. I'm a lover of all things babies. I will fight tooth and nail for the voiceless. I am asking, I am pleading with all of you. Please, help me. Help the members of my community, where I've lived my whole life. Help us to help them. We have an animal control officer, and with all due respect, I don't see what she is doing to help. I speak for my friend Amy Smith with Whiskers Rescue. I will do whatever I can to help. I know so many people in this community, Amy Smith being one of them, who already goes above and beyond to help not only cats, but dogs. I don't know what else we can do. I've taken in so many animals to my home, helped them and still have them, and pay for them out of my own pocket and love them as if I chose them to be my own. Because who else was going to do it? And I think many of us in this community will say, "If not me, then who? If not me, then who? I'll continue to help, but I need your help. The community needs your help." I'm tired and tired and tired of being told by animal control, "I'm sorry, Jen, we can't do anything. My hands are tied." That's the worst feeling. That's the worst thing to be told. Because when their hands aren't tied, if I go to them, if the community goes to animal control and if they say, "My hands are tied", then what are we going to do? I'm going to them for help. I'm asking for help because I can't do anything else.
What specifically have you asked of them that they couldn't handle?
To go to different homes. Well, previously, when I was working for Centerstone, I had asked animal control to do quite a few welfare checks on animals that were in deplorable conditions in homes. Family members of certain homes that were taking animals off the street that were lost, but then taking them in for free and then trying to sell them for money. Basically flipping them, taking a healthy animal, flipping it to where it's not fed, not bathed, not vaccinated, no regular vet care, to be unhealthy, to then sell to someone else, just to put money in their pocket. And I was told multiple times, "My hands are tied." So what did I do? I'll take it. Give me the puppy. Give me the cat. Give them to me. And I can tell you, I've done that probably 50 times. And every single time, I figured it out. Whether it meant keeping an animal in my car all day while I'm working, whether it meant putting an animal in my garage, without my husband knowing, mind you, until I figured it out. But I always figured it out. Taking it to a foster home or a rescue somewhere else in Indiana or over in Ohio, I always figured it out. But I'm running out of options. I'm just a community member. I'm a paying citizen. I do what I can with what I can, just as many of us do, but I don't know what else we can do. I ask that our laws that are already put in place to be enforced by RPD and by animal control. If animal control cannot enforce, then is it a possibility to give her more support or replace her? I just don't know what else to ask.
We hear you, and we will speak to the chief and see what we can do, if we can improve anything, and if not, we won't be able to. So we'll just have to see what we can do.
Okay.
Does anybody on the council have any questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I think this is something... I hear you. I understand, and we have many of the same feelings. And I think you know that I have a passion for animals, especially dogs. I think that this should probably be deferred to the safety committee. I think as she's kind of left us open on a broad spectrum, we do have an animal problem. And it is becoming a safety issue for the community. So I think the council should probably take that into consideration.
Any other comments?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I will talk to the safety committee then. Mr. McNabb. All right. I guess he isn't... Mr. McNabb, do you not want to speak?
Well, there's a Brian McNabb. A Brian McNabb?
Brian McNabb.
I own Wayne County Taxi.
Taxi companies.
Taxi complaints.
Pardon me?
Taxi complaints.
Yeah, taxi.
My last name is Knudson.
Pardon me?
My last name is Knudson. You said something about taxis.
We have the wrong name.
We got the wrong name.
All right, fine. Go right ahead.
How do you spell that?
That's okay.
How do you spell that?
K-N-U-T-S-O-N. First name is Brian.
We had the first part right.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Brian Knudson. I own Wayne County Taxi LLC here in Richmond, Indiana. I started this company back in August 2024. The city and the police notified me right away about the city ordinance, and if I were to violate any of the city ordinance, I would be shut down until I'm up to compliance. Sorry, I'm kind of nervous.
Take your time.
And if I were to continue violating the city ordinance, I would be shut down. My vehicle would get towed, and I would never be able to run a taxi service here in Richmond ever again. But this isn't only for me to follow. It's for my competitors. There's three other competitors. I have seen multiple violations and notified the police and the city about every violation they have committed. Every time I have reported a violation, all I get are the words, "We have to catch them and we have to catch them in order to prosecute them." Chapter 119 in the city ordinance is for taxicabs of Richmond specifically. I have stated the chapter in the articles in which each cab service is in violation of. I have been watching my competition continue to violate the city ordinance that I proudly follow. I am not looking to get rid of my competition by no means. I just want fair game. I feel like nothing I say or mention to the city or the police matters. Why should I have to follow the city ordinance and get fined while my competition gets a grace period? By the way, if you look over chapter 119 in the city ordinance, there's nothing about grace period.
I'm sorry, what?
Yeah. In chapter 119 of the city ordinance, nowhere in any of the sections, there's 31 sections, nowhere in the 31 sections does it say that there is a grace period. Chapter 119-31 states, "Unless a section provides otherwise, any violation of this chapter shall result in a fine of amount of $250 being assessed against the taxicab and/or the driver as authorized in this chapter. Any taxicab that is found not to be in compliance with any of the provisions of this chapter shall be immediately removed from service and may not be operated within the city until such time as said taxicab is certified by a member of the traffic division of the Richmond Police Department to be in full compliance of this chapter." Now, I'm not going to name a taxi service, but there's one specifically that I'm thinking of that has recently started back in January. They have been reported many times, and each time, nothing has happened. The first two months they ran, they were running illegally. They even start to threaten me by phone and in person. They even ended up threatening one of my drivers to the point where she was in fear of her life and ended up quitting on me. If you want proof, look them up on Google. Their website states also that they've been open since January 2025. If you still need proof, look at their reviews. To end this all, I just have one question. When will the city and the police listen to me and other taxi owners and help us instead of agreeing and turning the other way? That is it.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Bumbalo.
I have a question. So at the beginning, you said that someone approached you to give you warnings about your service. Who was that that came and warned you? And why did they come to you and warn you?
So a little backstory. I moved back here back in March of last year, April of last year. I have three years at that time prior experience in the taxi industry. I saw that there was no taxi service, and the Richmond community needed one right away. I tried looking online on what I needed to do, and I couldn't find one. So I just went online, went on Facebook and said, "Hey, I'm Wayne County Taxi. If you need a ride, give me a call." And that's when the police, or some, according to the police, someone reported me. And the police called me and said, "Hey, this is what you need to do, and if we do catch you, you will be violated." Well, inviolation for one, get fined, and your vehicle will get towed. So I kept that in my heart, and I just don't see that with this recent taxi that has been in Richmond.
So with what happened, you made sure that you did everything right?
Correct. I did everything right from that point on. I shut down. Everyone that called, I said, "Hey, just give me a couple months." It took me two months, day and night, to become a regular taxi service under every law in Richmond.
Yeah, so the bottom line is you felt like you've been asked to rise to the occasion and make sure that you do right by your business, but you want to make sure, since you were, you know, called out, you want everybody to be treated the same?
Yes, I just want equality, to be honest.
Yeah, that's understandable.
I just don't... It's wrong that... I just don't, it's wrong that I got approached right away. And right away when me and all these other taxi services have found out there is a new one. They've been in multiple violations from the start. And, um, even when they apparently got approved from the city, they're still in violation. I can't tell you off the top of my head, but one of the sections in 119 states that you need markings on both vehicles. Now, to my understanding, there's one police officer that does all the inspections for every taxi once, no, my apologies, every quarter. I found out that taxi service only had one marking on the driver's door. I went to the police and the city and I said, hey, why did this taxicab get approved? Aren't we supposed to be up to compliance before getting approved? And all that I got told was, oh, we're giving them grace period. And that's what.
Do you, do you realize why, what they did?
No, I don't.
They, they did go, follow up on your complaint. And you're right, they only had information on one side, and I have the ordinance here too, on one side, but there had been ordered for the second, the second side. And when they were presented with proof to the police department that that was ordered, they gave them the right to go ahead and continue to operate as it was waiting for the shipment to arrive to them so they could put it on the other side of their car.
Okay, I was not given that information.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'm going back a little while. I believe we've had discussion on chapter 119 and taxicabs during a previous administration, during a previous council. And Councilor Clay Miller, uh, at that time, we discussed how Uber and other internet service taxi or more or less taxi providers had come into the market. And I want to say that we actually struck chapter 119. Now, I may be wrong.
I'd have to refer to the clerk.
Yeah, I would.
You're wrong.
I'll contact Clay Miller. But I, I remember discussion about that. You know, if, if we're going to, you know, regulate taxis, why aren't we regulating Uber as well?
Because the state has those and they don't touch taxis, but they will only do the Ubers.
Can't hear you, can't understand you.
The state regulates Ubers. We don't have anything to do with it. We regulate taxis and they don't have anything to do with it. That's all.
Those two separate entities.
Yep, they are. Uber and Lyft are separate from taxicabs. I don't know all the information, but they are separate. Uber and Lyft is, you know, around the United States. Taxicab is for one specific area, county. One more thing is I've noticed that the city ordinance is back from 2018. I guess what I would like to ask is for you guys to go over it and maybe update it. I have found out that according to the city ordinance, you don't need to be a proper LLC in Indiana in order to be a taxicab here in Richmond. I found that out today.
We don't have anything in the ordinance about that.
Okay. There's nothing in that ordinance about that, right?
Right, right. But to my understanding, in order to get proper insurance for taxicab, you need to provide proper, um, papers that you're regulated with the state in order to get that insurance for taxicab use. You understand what I'm saying?
Through the state or through the city?
Well, through the city.
Okay, because the city regulates taxicabs.
Right.
The, the state regulates Uber and Lyft.
Right. But what I'm trying to say is, um, these insurance companies in order to get the proper, because insurance companies have special insurance for taxicabs. In order to be a, a proper taxicab and have that insurance, you need to have an LLC in the state of Indiana.
That's a possibility. I, I don't know.
Mr. President, we, we require proof of insurance to operate a taxicab. And so whether or not an insurance provider is willing to issue insurance to an LLC or an individual or a corporation is a determination that the insurance agent and the company will make. I don't think that's a, a decision that we get to make, but we do get to require the insurance, which is on the books.
Okay.
Yeah, and they do.
Mr. President.
Mr. Engel.
Brian, thank you for being here tonight. These violations that you mentioned, wha- what are the violations? Is it, is it a problem with the vehicle or a problem with stickers on the vehicle?
Well, so I actually found out. It's just one violation. I did have two that I had in mind, but, um, I guess I looked over the city ordinance recently and one of the violations I had in mind is actually not true, which, um.
What, what's the violation? I don't understand what the violation is.
So.
Is it signage on the vehicle?
No, it's, um, proof of or where you can and cannot have your office. I mean, I haven't looked in, when I first started, I didn't look into the city ordinance, but I've been told by the city that I need to have a separate office space and I can't run out of my residence. Now I found out recently that two taxicabs, maybe three, are running out of their house. But I got told that I can't run or I can't run in Richmond until I have a separate office space. Hence why my office space is at 630 East Main Street here in Richmond.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The applicable ordinance states that anyone operating a taxicab business must have a permanent office from which to control and regulate the operation of the taxicab business. It doesn't dictate that that office be separate from a residence. And so I think probably more of a zoning question.
That is. If they have two or more vehicles, they have to go to add a variance.
119, sure, that's what I mean. It's a zoning question, not one of section 119.
That's, that is correct.
Yeah, I think you were told incorrectly.
Yeah, and that is correct. And I've been told recently that if a taxicab service has two or more, that they need a separate office space. But I was told that I need a separate office space when I only had one cab when I was first starting out. Now I wish I had proof, but I don't have proof. It's just word against word.
Ma'am clerk.
I don't think it means that he has to have a separate office space, but he has to have zoning variance to be able to run it out of his home.
Did you hear that?
Yeah, I heard that. So have these other taxicabs been zoned or?
No, they only have one car. They've got one car, they can run it out of their home. That's their primary place of business. If they have two cars, they have to have a variance to do that.
Okay.
I think I'll assign this to the safety committee, so it looks like we need to re-review this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Board of Public Works and Safety minutes are in your packets. Do you have any questions or comments? Hearing none. Reparts from department head.
Tracy Brazil, Richmond Street Department. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening. The street department is responsible for approximately 200 lane miles of city streets. Our mission is to provide the street and sidewalk maintenance, urban forestry management, snow and ice removal and emergency response to citizens and visitors of Richmond, Indiana so safety and the street infrastructure are maintained in the most effective and efficient manner. We have divisions within the street department. They are paving division, which covers potholes, milling, crack sealing. We laid two, 2,646 ton asphalt last year. Our street sweeping division picked up 2,008 tons of debris. Our concrete crew, which maintains sidewalks, curbs and the ADA ramps, poured 211 tons of concrete. Our snow and ice removal spread 911 tons of salt between 2024 and 2025. Our leaf removal crews picked up 795 tons of leaves. Our sign and traffic control crew, they paint the lines, curbs and do all the signage in the city. And our urban forestry management crews do removals, pruning, stump removals and plantings. Our emergen- environmental and safety response teams do the storm damages and road closures. We also have two in-house mechanics that have taken care of almost 75% of the issues in-house through maintenance and, you know, repairs. The street department receives approximately 60% of its funding from gasoline and other taxes and the remaining 40% from our property taxes. Last year, with the help of the state community crossings matching grant, we were able to pave and mill 12 streets and fix sidewalks in the Parkview Mary Scott neighborhoods. That came to around $680,860. This year, we are planning on paving 13 streets at a total of $1,883,669. This is possible because of the support through the administration and the redevelopment commission along with funding from, you know, MVH and LRS, which is our main funding source, revenue source. At this time, I'd like to thank all the street department employees who usually go above and beyond when performing job tasks and projects. Also, I'd like to thank the other departments who are always willing to help out whenever we have to ask for help. And at this time, I'll ask our, if you have any questions.
Questions to TL at this time? I have one. How many, how many sidewalks do you think that we might be able to get taken care of this year?
Uh, uh, well, patching, we, we usually do the, uh, whatever comes in, uh, work order requests. So we'll probably do, I'd say 30. That's probably, I'd say, 80-foot sections. So we usually have to order four and a half yards of concrete at a time. So we'll try to get three to four houses in an area to get that much concrete laid or we'll have to pay a, a fine or a penalty, so.
We, what do you do when you have maybe four or five, uh, squares that need to be replaced?
That's pretty much what it amounts to. In front of somebody's house, it'll be four or five squares that we'll replace.
And you can do those? Don't you have a backlog of those right now?
Oh, yeah, 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 we're about four years behind.
Okay, well, that's what I was, that's what I was going to ask. So of those, how many can you do a year?
Well, I think we did about 35 last year.
Thirty-five?
Requests. And then we did all of the South 7th Street on the west side. So it was the 1100, the 1000 and 1100 block. So there were a few other areas that we did quite a, quite a bit. It was just wasn't that much, so.
That's the biggest complaint I get is sidewalks. And I'm sure it is you too.
Yeah.
And, uh, when, when we find out it's going to be three to four years, that never satisfies anyone.
Right.
And, uh.
So our budget for a sidewalk repair is like $30,000. So usually I have to move money.
Thirty thousand?
Yeah.
That's it.
I usually have to move money to, you know, to get, you know.
That, that, you need 30 million to.
Right, right. So I'm usually out of money by August, so I have to move money for September, so.
Well, I'd like to compliment the street department for all they do because they do a real good job with what they've got to work with. And, uh, if at all possible, whenever I call over there, if it's all, if it's humanly possible, they always take care of it. Sidewalks is, is the main problem that they can't handle at this, at that time for a request. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. President?
Yes. TL, I too would like to thank you for, um, mother nature wasn't very kind at times this winter and you guys did a great job. On the sidewalks conversation as it relates to when the snow falls on the sidewalk, I would like to either host or engage in conversation with, um, the street department being a part of it as far as how, um, in the city of Richmond, we can tackle some of these sidewalks that are traveled by walkers, but also people parking and attending church services, mass, things like that, that, um, it, it's hard to move through icy, snow sidewalks. And, um, I know, I've, I heard the conversation a lot. We got some time, hopefully, before the next snowfall, that maybe we can get some minds together. Well, you know, it is springtime in Indiana. So I, you know, I, I don't want to anger mother nature again, but, um, you know, I, I would like to, to engage the street department in conversation on that because, um, quality of life means, um, being able to walk from business to business or to be able to, to walk without fear of falling.
Yeah. Okay. And to follow up on that, we did meet with Main Street and between Denise Ritz at the park and myself and Main Street. We're, we're working on a plan to try to better facilitate. Like I said, it's not always going to work the same way.
Right.
Just depends how much snow we get, whether it's icy or not. But yeah, I'll, I'll let you know when the next Main Street meeting is, if you want to attend. And that way we can.
Thank you.
Maybe go through all that, so.
That would be nice. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I, um, I always appreciate all your help, TL, when I, when I've asked for it. But I don't see anything about alleys in here. And we are a community of alleys, including there are people whose alley is their front drive.
Yeah.
And some of our alleys are in horrible shape. And particularly because of this past winter, it's been tough. But there are other alleys like downtown. There's some alleys that are almost impossible to traverse.
Yeah.
I called and complained and I got yinged and yanged around and I don't know if my complaint got registered anywhere or not.
So what, what happens is sanitation is supposedly in charge of most of the alleys that they run their trash trucks through. So we'll get a, we'll get a list from Randy Wright at sanitation. And then we'll go and patch as many, or, you know, pave or strip patch, whatever we need to do, as many alleys as we can get to, so. And it, it's about.
How many do you get to?
It's about 25, $30,000, so it's not a whole lot of money, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So our main focus is the streets. To be totally honest, our main focus is, you know, trying to get, you know, as many streets done within the timeframe we have and the money, so. So alleys usually take a second.
Bet they do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I also would like to make one more comment. Especially with all the conversations happening, the investment into our downtown, our investments on housing and the conversations that we've had. I just wanted to be top of mind that, um, you know, addressing, uh, housing needs and making our community more attractive, um, you know, also includes paving and streets. You know, I, I, you can't really have one nice housing without streets to get there. So, um, just, it's really a comment. You know, I know we have community crossing grant and to be able to try to maximize that as well so that we are getting as much bang for our buck as possible. But I really think that, um, you know, continuing the discussion of strengthening our ability to, um, pave these roads and to make these roads look nice is, um, people are, are prospecting our community.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I guess I, I don't want to let this go till it's clear in my mind. Is there a list of alleys that are to be repaired? And can we, can we get a look at that list?
Usually sanitation will send us the list.
Okay.
So, and I can get with Pat.
Okay.
After the meeting or something like that. And we can send you a list of. And we can send you a list of whatever. I don't think Randy sent anything out yet, so.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions?
Anything else, Bill?
Thank you, TL.
Thank you.
I got nothing.
Thank you very much.
I hesitate to even ask, is there any miscellaneous business?
Mr. President.
Or this is on first reading?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I have a statement I'd like to read. I don't know if this is the best place for it or under unfinished business.
Right ahead.
Very good, thank you. I wrote this statement because this week, there's been some question about the city being able to sell property. And I think it's important that everyone knows it's not a political issue, it's not a good or bad guy issue, it's an issue that is very in-depth at this moment in time with us trying to revitalize our city. And the reason I say that is because our city's at a very, a tipping point for being able to afford the services that we currently provide. Everyone knows our population has gone down, our income has gone down, but yet we're still providing the services that we have provided for many, many years. And hopefully, we can continue to do that. But to do that, we have to change the way we're doing things, and we have to have success in the things that we are investing in. There's been, the Indiana Code is very clear on selling of governmental property, and I won't go into that. There is much conversation at the national level about using non-governmental organizations, NGOs, to usurp the law into distribution of funds, et cetera. I do not believe this is a good policy, nor is it fair to surrounding property owners or taxpayers. A few months ago, this administration tried to buy a parking lot approximately one block north of the 100 block, or the 000 block of South 9th, and was willing to pay $200,000 for that lot. The council rejected the purchase and made it clear that a study is needed to make all parking lot decisions moving forward to ensure the best chance of success of our core investments. This is just one piece of an overall puzzle. I must ask, are we buying or are we selling? From what study, plan, are we making these decisions? There is currently a commitment to invest tens of millions of dollars in the historic core of our city, with a plan for a large apartment complex in the 600 block and apartments above all downtown retail spaces. All of these apartments are planned to be market rate, means non-subsidized. This is a very important moment in time for the core of our community. Each move must be strategic to give the best chance for the whole investment to come together. Success or failure in this project will affect future services, infrastructure maintenance, and blight elimination. What do future parking needs look like downtown? We do not have any idea at this moment, but hopefully, we will need to manage that in the future. Currently, I think we need not take any action on downtown parking until we have a clear picture of future needs and how we strategically plan to meet those calculated needs. The City Council has made this clear in the recent pass to this administration. Thank you.
Thank you. The city does have a committee for this, at this time, and they did meet on last Wednesday, and at that time, they decided not to sell parking lots. That's one of the things they did. And I think that that committee will probably be used considerably in the few years to come.
Thank you.
Ordinance is on first reading, ordinance number 24.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we read ordinance 24, 2025 by title only.
Second.
Have a motion second to suspend the rules and read ordinance 24, 2025 by title only. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried.
Ordinance number 24, 2025, an appropriation ordinance authorizing the submittal acceptance and appropriation of a grant from the United States Federal Aviation Administration.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
My name is Audrey Shaich, and I am the grant administrator for the city. Ordinance 24, 2025 is an appropriation ordinance authorizing the submittal acceptance and appropriation of a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration. The city of Richmond is requesting $275,000 in funding through the FAA bipartisan infrastructure law funding for the design of a new terminal building at the Richmond Municipal Airport. This grant requires a 2.5% match in the amount of $6,875, which will be used from budgeted airport funds. The application deadline is April 28th, 2025.
April 28th?
Yes.
Next Monday.
That's Monday, right?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Audrey was able to come to the Finance Committee this evening, and we recommend moving this forward to capture those monies.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody, any questions, Audrey, at this time? Hearing none, what's council's pleasure?
Mr. President.
Mr. Goss?
I move that we suspend the rules and advance ordinance 24, 2025 to second reading, read by title only.
Second.
Have a motion second to suspend the rules and advance ordinance 24, 2025 to second reading and read by title only. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried, thank you.
Ordinance number 24, 2025, an appropriation ordinance authorizing the submittal acceptance and appropriation of a grant from the United States Federal Aviation Administration.
Ordinance number 24, 2025 is on second reading, which is public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of this ordinance?
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to engross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried.
Call the question.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to call the question. Please call the question. Madam Clerk.
Doug Goss.
Aye.
Lucinda Wright.
Aye.
Bill Engel.
Aye.
Ann Taylor.
Aye.
Gary Turner.
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo.
Aye.
Justin Burkhart.
Aye.
Jerry Purcell.
Aye.
And Larry Parker.
Aye.
All are in favor.
Motion carried, thank you.
Second reading.
Ordinance is on second reading.
Ordinance number 22, 2025, an appropriation ordinance authorizing the acceptance and appropriation of a grant for new community funding projects.
First of all, a report from the Finance Committee on this one?
Yeah, Mr. President. We heard from Pat. Pat brought us up to speed on any of the changes, and Finance Committee recommends approval on this ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
I don't have anything to add to that, yeah. Ask their question.
Okay, well, ordinance 22 is on second reading, and we, anybody in the audience wants to speak in favor, please come forward. Anyone want to speak in opposition, please come forward.
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to engross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried.
Call the question.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to call the question. Please call the question.
Doug Goss.
Aye.
Lucinda Wright.
Aye.
Bill Engel.
Aye.
Ann Taylor.
Aye.
Gary Turner.
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo.
Aye.
Justin Burkhart.
Aye.
Jerry Purcell.
Aye.
And Larry Parker.
Aye.
All are in favor.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 23, 2025.
Finance Committee has requested that ordinance 23 be referred back to them.
Okay.
Is there any unfinished business to come before council at this time? Mr. Goss, since you happen to be the Safety Committee Chairman, I know you don't have anything to do, so. We will have- Animals and taxi cabs at your convenience, please.
All right.
What is council's pleasure?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you, we stand adjourned.